Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to our Board of Selectmen meeting for the 23rd of January. Could we all stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes, we have four here. We have three workshop, Board of Selectmen workshops, and one regular meeting, which was on January 9th. I'm gonna ask if we could do them all at once unless someone has an objection to pull it out. I certainly don't.
I just had a couple of questions on some of the minutes, and I, since I only got to read them late last night, I apologize for not-
No problem.
... giving you any reference. The first question I had is on the January 6th workshop minutes, and I think this had something to do with the changing- I know in a prior draft, there was a different date for this. You, Barbara, this is a question for you, and we can correct this afterwards. You reference Ms. Baker in the second paragraph with Ms. Garthwaite. She's not listed as an attendee. I wasn't sure, I don't recall, and I don't-
She wasn't there.
I couldn't find my notes.
She wasn't there.
Okay, so I didn't remember her being there, so I'm just wondering.
Make the deletion.
Okay. Okay. Then... Yes, and just a clarification on the language used on the January 9th Board of Selectmen minutes referring on page, item 4, page 2, which just referred to my comments. It was that the Environmental Enhance, Sustainability and Enhancement Committee is working to develop, to identify green initiatives, excuse me, including, sorry, establishing electric vehicle, charging stations to pilot project. So instead of development low-cost improvement performance plans, identify green initiatives. Does that make sense to you?
Okay.
And then... Similarly, with the language on the January 13th workshop minutes, with regarding to my comments in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th paragraph. Ms. Overlander said the town's assessor is working on this issue. I'm not sure I understood, but when you reflected, it's developing a property list. So I'm not quite sure I understood what you and-
You had explained that the tax assessor is helping to develop a property list of, a list of properties that are not tax exempt.
She has a, she has a list of all of the properties, those identified as tax exempt and also taxable, but she's working on the, with, she's working on this issue of identifying residential and, you know, educational purposes. How the, a notice was sent out, this is more information than we need for the minutes, but essentially to clarify that she's working on the issue of the tax exempt properties.
Okay, so what changes would you like reflected in the minutes?
Ms. Overlander said the town's assessor is working on this issue. And again, and then in the 7th paragraph. Ms. Overlander suggested the town consider developing an advertising policy and receive input from residents. Let me see how I can read my notes here. Whether there should be nonprofit and commercial advertising around town. I don't believe I suggested that we need regulations, but... So those are my comments, primarily to my own comments-
Okay.
-as they're reflected.
And-
No comments.
No comments. I have no comments. Thank you, they will be reflected. Revised minutes. With that said, is there a motion to accept with those revisions?
Yes, I move with the amendments.
I second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approved. The three workshops and the one regular board meeting. What we're going to do is, right now, because we're kind of overloaded with lots of different committees, and proposed commissions, and everything else, and our regular work, we're gonna lighten the load a little bit, because once a week, it's running into a lot of problems with the, you know, other meetings and staff, so we're gonna cut it back to once. We're gonna do the two boards of select meetings, second and fourth week usually. And then in the middle, we're gonna do our board workshop for now, just until we're caught up, because it's, we're going 15 different directions right now, so I think it'll be a little bit more productive for us to do that for the moment, until we're caught up. So next week, I don't think, I think Selectwoman Overlander's not gonna be here on the 27th. Yeah, so I mean, it doesn't matter anyway. So, but we're gonna send out a revised schedule in the coming days, so. With that, we'll go to the First Selectmen's updates. And, so we are completing the budget process, and I will present tonight to the Budget Committee of the BET at 6:00 PM, which will be followed by a public hearing in this room. If you're around and you have any concerns about the budget, whether it's operating or capital, please, tonight's tonight, to show up and hear your views. Portchester Zoning Board of Appeals has postponed the action on the Terry Lighthouse till February 20th. I've attended a few already. I've also met with the mayor of Portchester, Mayor Philanka, and several times now. And there's concern on both sides of the, of the border about the proposal there. If you're not familiar with it, it is, was originally planned for 10 stories on the corner of Abendroth and Mill, which is a very, very busy intersection right now. Portchester has a lot of other proposals right now. Some are actually not too bad, including a 10-story one over on where the old Capitol Theater, the Capitol Theater is, and the, and the post, and the train station. Kind of makes sense there. It looks like they're targeting millennials in Portchester. And some of them are pretty good, but they, some of the officials there do know that the, have expressed the same concerns we have where this particular one is going. And as I stated at the Zoning Board of Appeals, if our EMT, police, and fire vehicles are having a hard time getting through that traffic to get to our citizens, then the town will have to look at any and all options. And we're, you know, I said we'd look into even closing the road if we're able to do that. It's not clear we are able to do that. So far, we haven't found out that we're not. But with that comes other issues too, so we're not taking it lightly, but I did want them to know that we're very serious about that, because right now, Mill Street and Delvin, and I know from living there for several years, it's a problem. It's a problem with the traffic. So we're on top of it. I will be there on February 20th again, and I'm in close contact with the Portchester administration, and we do have a great relationship. Last night, we met with the Glenville Pembroke Association. We would love to come to all of your associations, neighborhoods, and otherwise, if you invite us. We heard their concerns, including traffic issues. So it's another, you know, validation of why I want to establish a Public Safety Committee, which I'll be meeting with a few people in a few days on, that really would encompass, you know, fire, police, EMT, and all that, but we also now want to really address pedestrian safety. It's not, we've had three vehicular deaths in two years now. Two in the same spot, one of the people I knew. And it's not just those two spots, there are other areas in town. So we're gonna have to really look at all corners and sections of Greenwich. Granted, there's a lot of things that go into it, including cell phones and people distracted. But there are some things I think we can do and be proactive, because it's, there's lots of cars here, and there's lots of people driving around that are distracted. We found that sometimes the wider the road, the quicker, the faster they go. So there are some things we can do, and we want to look at everything. So please, send us your suggestions, call, email, come visit. If you have any particular areas of concern, we want to look at that, but there'll be more on that in the coming days and weeks. So again, that Public Safety Committee will be in formation, and I'll be working with Jill and Lauren to get some more names on that, too. I sent an email to the, I guess you could say the newly formed, the newer addition of the Greenwich delegation to Hartford with a new member being elected on Tuesday night. It was a campaign pledge that I said I made, that I would ask to meet with them before every session, to bring to their attention bills that I'd like to see proposed on behalf of the town and citizens in the town, and if they could secure a public safe, a public hearing, which is the first step in the bill process, that I would be willing, as long as it didn't conflict with our work here, to go up there and testify on those bills. So I sent the email this morning. I don't know if anybody's, if they've even received it yet, but I'm looking to meet with them next week, because session starts, a short session this year, it's only three months. It starts February 5th, and it goes to early May. So, you know, it's not as hectic as a five-month schedule, but, or prolonged, but still, there's gonna be legislation being debated, and I'd like to see some of the issues that are of concern to Greenwich residents debated up there. I met with the Census 2020 Committee yesterday. It's very important, we're gonna be updating our website on this, and I'm gonna send out a couple e-blasts in March on this. Very important that people fill them out for lots of reasons, but also money is involved with that. So we want people to be counted. It's very, very important. If you know, you know, sometimes, especially today, some people are not too trusting to answer these, but we have to make sure we do our best to get as much compliance as possible on that. It's very, very important. And I also met with the congressman yesterday, and his, new head of his local office, my office here, and pledged, you know, cooperation. I did ask them to look into any possible grants that may be on the federal level for public safety and alternative energy. We are looking on charging stations to get a few in this year. We'd like to do a little bit more next year. And we're, we've started that process already, but, you know, I think there may be some, some money out there that we haven't even, you know, thought about that could possibly come our way. So we're looking at that, both state and federal. But it was a good conversation with the congressman, so we hope to have lots of cooperation in the future with his office. That's it for my updates, so I will go to the Selectwoman and Persons' updates now. So I'll, I think we started with Lauren last time, we'll go left to Jill this time.
Thank you, Fred. Not too much more to report, but the Sustainability and Enhancement Committee is still hard at work, working on developing a structure and organization. There's a lot of energy and enthusiasm in our community. There's a lot of work already going on by our own internal town departments, as well as outside volunteer groups as well. So if you are interested and would like to be a part of it, please reach out. We are pulling together what we are doing internally, and as well as throughout the town, in order to support both the initiatives on the POCD, as well as the Sustainable Connecticut designation, for which we'll have to reapply, I believe it's next year. And exciting things are really gonna be happening, starting with the pilot, hopefully, on electric vehicle charging stations, and also looking at energy conservation, which the RTM is considering at the same time. And again, I will echo Mr. Camillo's comments that please invite us to your meetings and events, so we know what you're working on and how we can better support your efforts as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Lauren?
Thanks, Fred, thanks Jill. So I'll try to keep it to my three bullet points. I think last time we had our meeting, I mentioned I was going to the CCM training for newly elected municipal leaders, and I did go on January 11th. We talked about the fundamentals of municipal government. I learned about the history of local government in the state of Connecticut. 65% of the towns, actually 110 municipalities, have the same form of government that we do in Greenwich. I know when we first met in December, we were talking about how we structure, if we call ourselves something different, but we're definitely in the majority within the state of Connecticut. Also learned how other municipalities in our COG, I think that stands for Council of Governments, are handling the tax exempt ownership within their communities, and how to create some more innovative ways of having things like schools and hospitals that are tax exempt contribute financially to the towns that they reside in. Also, I have been assigned to develop, or work with the committee to develop the KPIs for the POCD. We met this morning and started to think about some of the KPIs that are cross-functional. There are six overarching themes in the POCD, so things like community, sense of community, housing, financial considerations. We actually started to think about KPIs that cross all of them, so we were a little excited about that. I just left it at like 9:55, so I'm still excited. And as I mentioned in our last meeting, there are at least 41 boards, commissions, and neighborhood associations that we're trying to meet with. And having, starting, having started, excuse me, to meet with them, there's a lot of common ground that you all share. So I think one of the nice things that's gonna come out of this, which I sort of always envisioned, is helping you understand what another board commissioner, neighborhood community, is doing. There's a lot more similarities than differences, and that'll just help us, from more of an umbrella standpoint, you know, meet the needs of our residents. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, under Old Business, we have the proposed 2020 banner fee schedule, Joseph Sisiano Parks and Rec.
Good morning.
Morning, Joe.
And just here to, on the last part of our fee schedule approval, to propose that the banner fee at the Greenwich Avenue, now this is the banner that goes across the top of the avenue. The fee change from $250 to $300 is being proposed, and the cost of the overtime, if applicable, will be applied to the installation. And sometimes it is, and sometimes it isn't, but it depends how the, how the schedule goes of the installation. So we would make that known to the applicant well in advance, that there may be a cost. Just for your reference, at today's labor rates, it would be about $175, so, if there was an overtime charge for the install. What we'd like to do is install one, the first one, and take it down. While we're taking down the first, the first one, we'll put up the second one, and, you know, so there's, it's really only one installation charge. It isn't, it isn't as charged for installing and taking it down. Usually, it's just one charge. So it could be, as I said, at today's labor rate, it's about $175.
Thank you, Joe. So we go from $250 to $300, but possibly, if there was overtime involved, it could be as much as $475 for nonprofits out there. We also, we are going to, Katie, I saw Katie somewhere. We're gonna be working on coming up with a comprehensive banner policy throughout town. I just got a call this morning from a friend in Chickahominy who asked about that part of town for their parade in August, and I think we, you know, having something concrete will certainly help us, and we won't have to sit here and talk about this in the future. So we will get that done, but I have no problem with that, with that upping of the fees. My colleagues, have any questions?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Sisiano, and thank you, Mr. Camillo. We had, we've talked about this a number of times. I actually think it's been really informative and productive. We've gotten a lot of outreach from the community on the not-for-profit banners in particular. Most of the commentary, I'm gonna say, most of the responses that I've gotten on the not-for-profit banners have weighed in favor of the banner. I have gotten people who object to the banner largely for character questions, and I would expect that when we take up the, a overall overarching policy, that that would be addressed. There have been a number of concerns raised about the commercialization of advertising and other banners, including the banners on the, not the banners, excuse me, the commercial advertising on Greenwich Avenue, that, so I, I'm really gratified to hear that we'll be taking that up as a policy. I think that responds to constituent concerns. Thank you to the Greenwich Times for their article on this as well, with the input. And so what, what I had, had hoped was that we would consider this as an interim measure, if they, moving it forward, and if you could track the data on requests, and on costs, and on overtime. I know that there was some discussion about how a weather event could impact the banner, and whether that would impose an additional cost either on the town or on the, I expect that to be unlikely, but if you could just track the data, so that when we do take it up again, we'll have the data to work with and understand what the actual costs to the department are, as well as the benefit.
Okay, that's fair enough.
So, but to, knowing that, we will take it up as a policy. My questions on this particular component have been addressed, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. So is there a motion to accept the new fee structure for the banners, for the nonprofits across the avenue?
I motion to accept the new fee structure for the advertising banners for the nonprofits that go across, is it Lewis Street?
It's the Lewis Street intersection.
Lewis Street intersection.
Okay, in a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, pass. Thank you, Joe. Okay, next up, we have the Scenic Road Designation for the Northern Loop around Binny Park. Candace Garthwaite and Rita Baker?
Rita's not here, Rita's in Germany.
Oh, okay. Hopefully, it's warmer.
My partner is missing. So yes, Candace Garthwaite, Old Greenwich. Good morning, and thank you for this time on your agenda. As you know, Old Greenwich and Riverside residents are hoping to gain a scenic road designation for the scenic and historic roadway around a portion of the much-beloved Binny Park. The next step in the scenic road application process is for the First Selectmen, for select men and women, on behalf of the town, to sign the written statement of approval for the submission of the scenic road application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is the Planning and Zoning Commission that has the authority to designate scenic roads. So in essence, we're looking to further our application process. This is not a submission of the application. This initiative is aligned with an objective in the new 2019 Plan of Conservation and Development. As a matter of fact, it's the first guiding principle in the 2019 POCD, and that is to, and I quote, "preserve our community character and sense of place," end quote. And the POCD delineates a specific objective in that section, and that is to, and I quote again, "encourage the designation of more scenic roads throughout the town," end quote. The Town's Municipal Code, Article 3, allows the Planning and Zoning Commission to designate town highways, or portions thereof, as scenic roads, for the benefit of present and future generations. Since the Scenic Road Ordinance was adopted in 1992, five local roads have received designation. Cliffdale Road, Bering Hill Road, Selden Lane, Buckfield Lane, and Sommeel Lane. The Binny Park proposal would be Greenwich's first official scenic road south of the Merritt Parkway. The Binny Park Loop would include Sound Beach Avenue from Arch Street to Westcombe Wood Road, Westcombe Wood to Arch Street, and Arch Street to Sound Beach, for a total length of .6 miles. If we achieved the scenic road designation, it could have an impact on other important and beautiful roads, such as the roadway around and through Bruce Park. We feel our success could encourage the designation of other scenic and historic roads across town. I want to lay out a summary of the requirements of the process, because it is a little complex, and clarify again why we are before you this morning. A scenic road application requires endorsement by the owners of a majority of property that abuts this proposed scenic loop. All except two private owners of property along the Binny Park route have given their written approval. There are 13 property owners, and all property owners have received registered letters. The two owners we did not hear back from do rent their homes. We also received written approval from the Parrot Library and the First Congregational Church. Owners of properties on scenic roads preserve their property rights. The town of Greenwich is also an abutting property owner, as the town owns Binny Park. And in Greenwich, as Lauren alluded to, we have a government that's a little different, maybe from other places around the United States, but is quite common in Connecticut. And it's very much a government of checks and balances, and therefore, in order for the First Selectmen to give written approval for the submission of the application, he must receive approval from the representative town meeting. Jill, you look a little-
I'm trying to parse the data.
Okay, I'm gonna read it again. In order for the First Selectmen to give written approval for the submission of the application to PNC, he must receive approval from the representative town meeting, Greenwich's legislative body. If the RTM approves allowing the First Selectmen to sign the written approval, then we can submit the scenic road application to Planning and Zoning. In summary, we're here this morning to take the next step in the process, and be included on the March RTM call, with the hope that the RTM will allow us to pay our $1,200 fee, and then go ahead and submit the application to PNC. The Planning and Zoning Commission has the authority to designate town highways or portions thereof as scenic roads in accordance with the standards and procedures in the Town Charter, Article 3. If we go forward with the application and gain approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission, there is one final step. The scenic road would have to be approved by the RTM. We hope that the Selectmen will agree to our simple request to put this item on the RTM call. This will allow us to move forward with the next step in the scenic road application process. On the personal side, so often, when I go to the Parrot Library to drop or pick up a book, I have to stop and admire the unique view of Binny Park. The glistening water, the arched stone bridges, the elegant trees and lawn. It truly is a treasure, and right across the street is the First Congregational Church, first established in 1665. This view, this entry into our historic village, truly gives each and every resident of Greenwich a sense of place. The Town Charter Scenic Roads preamble states, "Scenic roads are irreplaceable resources, the destruction of which has had and will have-" the destruction of which has had and will have adverse impact on the town's historic and scenic heritage. It is this language that is our motivation to move forward, and we need your help.
Thank you, Candace, and thank you for meeting me out there at the site a few months ago when it was a little warmer. You explained it to me before, but people may not hear, may not know, what caused you to seek this designation at the beginning?
Well, when we were at a Planning and Zoning meeting regarding municipal improvement for that area in Old Greenwich, there was a proposal for a rather large-sized rotary and a significant raising of the road, which we felt would impact the Parrot Library and perhaps might impact residents on the other side of the road raise. We were asked at that time by P and Z if we had a scenic road designation, and we did not. So at that point, we felt, wow, we should, we should go forward and see if we can achieve a scenic road designation because we thought the location was worthy of it.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure my colleagues have some questions, but I, when I was there, and I agree with you, I love Binny Park, I love all our parks, but it's special, that's why everybody goes there and gets their wedding pictures. It's a, it's a, it's a special, special venue and spot for us. But in, you know, as in every other thing, nothing's as easy as it seems. And it seems that D P W has had an issue, zoning has had an issue with this designation law. The Law Department weighed in, Attorney Wetmore, regarding the intense vehicular component of this. So there's lots of questions, and I think everybody's okay with the intent, what you're trying to do, but lots of questions have popped up, so I know Jim Michael...
May I, may I just respond to that at this point?
Sure.
Before we hear from Mr. Michael. We are asking today to go forward with our application. That's why we're before you today.
Yes, but I'm saying if, if three different entities in Town Hall have weighed in and have serious concerns about it, for us to just throw it to the R T M...
Well, it's not an approval, it's permission for us to submit our application to Planning and Zoning. And it's at Planning and Zoning where I believe this real discussion around the pros, the cons, the obstacles are, I believe that's the proper body where that would be discussed. What we're asking for is transparency. An scenic road designation does not prohibit changes to the roadway. What it requires is that significant changes would be submitted to Planning and Zoning for review, and that could include review of engineering designs, it could, it would certainly, I assume, include a look at alternatives and some of the other options that might be available. So today, we're before you, asking for permission to go forward with the submission of our application. And it is the Planning and Zoning Commission where I believe that whole dialogue, and obviously there's a lot of dialogue to be had, would, would properly take place.
Okay, thank you. Again, I don't want to keep repeating what I, what I said, but there is serious, you know, significant concern from those entities. So I don't know, I know Jim is here, I don't know if Attorney Wetmore is here, or is Katie DeLuca is here, but certainly I'll, I'll let my colleagues, if you have any questions or...
No, I got the same input that Fred did, that because of the vehicular traffic, the excessive vehicular traffic, that it might not be so easy to pass as a scenic road. And the guidance from D P W, Town Planner and Land Use Attorney, was that if the objective is to have more transparency in any type of activity that happens at that rotary, or the bridge, for example, the flooding, et cetera, that scenic route might not necessarily be the right end. It might be a different, you know, option that we can go forward with, like historic designation. So those are some of the things that I've heard.
Right. Again, I want to keep it simple, however, I would like to respond to a couple of things that you brought up. One is intensive vehicular traffic is subjective. Just a half a mile away from this location, clearly you have Route 1 and I-95. And so clearly that's intensive vehicular traffic. And it really kind of depends on your time of day in Old Greenwich. And so that's really, again, I believe, a planning and zoning question for them to review it. And I believe it would be important for the town to really look at that, that Town Charter language and try to add more definition and clarification. So I think it's important that we go to that process and seek that clarification.
Jill?
Candace, thank you. And I do agree with Mr. Camillo that I think we all support the, the beauty and the access. The question I had, and I apologize if I missed it, I was looking for your email and the documentation, the role of the Board of Selectmen now, why do you need our permission to seek to go to the R T M?
I was advised by the town attorney that in, since this is a town-owned property, and the R T M is really, you know, speaks on behalf of the residents, that it requires R T M approval on behalf of the town to sign the abutters form. I asked, I asked three different times.
So, so I'm just, I'm trying to understand the process. So you're here to ask us, to ask the R T M whether we can sign the abutters form?
Yes.
You're saying yes, someone else is, is saying no? I'm not, I'm, I'm not quite sure I understand our role. If it then comes back to the first selectman to then decide whether in fact he wants to, having been given the authority or not, whether he, assuming he's given the authority, whether he wants to submit it. I, I'm having, I'm trying to understand what our...
I had a very difficult time, just as you, and I was told by Planning and Zoning and also the Law Department that this was how we had to go to get on the R T M call. So, yes.
Respectfully, the best way to think through it is...
Can you introduce yourself?
For the record.
I'm sorry, for the record, I'm Alan Lovejoy. I'm with Candace.
Thanks, Alan.
If you were a landowner, one of the 13 people that we went to with a letter saying, would you like to make this a scenic road? You simply say, yeah, I'd like to make it a scenic road, you sign off and off it goes. The town's a landowner, not that simple in the town of Greenwich. Who says, yeah, I'm the landowner and I want to make it a scenic road? Right? Well, the application is signed by the selectman on behalf of the R T M. Well, he can't do anything on behalf of the R T M until the R T M approves it for him to do it. So what we're asking you to do is simply ask the R T M for permission to sign as it an butter, yes, we think it's a scenic road, and then let the Planning and Zoning do their job, which is where all this stuff gets fleshed out. But you can't, as a landowner, simply do it, Fred, without the R T M saying, Fred, you have our approval to do it. So what we're asking for right now is simply to, for let us, to let us apply. And for that, the R T M has to approve Fred to sign.
I guess my question is really, why does the Board of Selectmen have to, have to, why are, why are we a critical component of you deciding to apply? The land, the other abutting landowners? Why do you, is it, do we own a, a, is it based on the percentage of ownership? Is there some reason why the, you couldn't just submit directly to the R T M?
And, and skip the town, which is the largest because you own the inside of the...
Yeah, it's, excuse me, sorry. Yes, the majority of ownership is important. And since Binny Park is, is a majority abutter, then it is important that we have the town signature. We can't just go on the residents and First Church, the graveyard, and the Parrot.
The town as the owner of Binny Park.
Yes, so that would be a legal question, Jill, that I was told this was the process we had to go to. So I, I am unable to answer any further than that.
Thank you.
Is there anything else for me?
No, I mean, I think, like, I don't know, I'll speak for myself, but probably the, my colleagues who, I think we're with you on, on what you're trying to do here. I just, there's a couple, I'm uncomfortable right now sending it for the March call. I'd rather get this, these questions answered in the next few weeks so we could put it on for April, rather than, because there's, again, to have D P W, Zoning and Law tell me one thing...
When you, okay, so you're talking about Katie, not the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes, yes. Jim, did you want to, to say a few words or, again, it's, it's not just me, I just, there is some concern right now going, just pushing it, giving it to them, if, there's, there may be even other things that I haven't heard, their concerns, because I haven't had a in-depth conversation with everybody on this yet, but maybe Jim could shed some light on it.
I think the one thing that I would just say is that the town does have a mechanism in place with the municipal improvement process for any major redesigns of roadways, that that has to go through Planning and Zoning as well, whether it's a scenic road, whether it's any road in town. If we're doing a major redesign of a roadway, we have to go through the Planning and Zoning process. So there is that process that we go through pretty much for any major redesign of a road, and that's the process that we went through on this process, on this project before. So that mechanism is in place, kind of that checks and balances as well. So that's another way to make sure that, you know, we're just not deciding things without going through a general process that the public gets to hear. In addition, most of our projects, we have public meetings on. The neighboring abutting properties are always invited to those public meetings, and they're always posted throughout town. So we try not to work our projects in this cloud of secrecy.
Thank you, Jim, I appreciate it. And if, you can come up. That's why I wish a few other people within, probably got called into other meetings, but they, I don't want to speak for them, that's why I'm not, I'm kind of hesitant to say some of the things that were given to me. That's why, at this point, myself, I'd rather wait until we get those answer, questions answered. I'm not slow-walking it, I want it, because I, I'm sympathetic for what you're trying to do here, and I know why you're trying to do it, so, but I, I'm just personally uncomfortable until I get those answers.
So I'll just be brief.
Thank you.
Nancy Chapin. I actually came today because I also have a concern. I applaud, again, love the park, I applaud what they're trying to do, but I'm on the Binny Park Advisory Committee, and we would be very interested to know how this might impact the work that we're doing. I want to make sure if we want to plant a tree, what review this would cause us. So I think that's something that should be part of the questions resolved.
Okay, yeah, that's a good point. Thank you, Nancy.
Can I just reiterate, so that we're clarifying it in a public place? In no way does a scenic road designation impact property owners, tree planting, any, anything on their property. There's no impact. Whereas a historic district designation has some pretty, well, definitely has an impact on homeownership and what they can do to their property. So, so the park itself would not be impacted whatsoever. Property owners are not impacted. And so, in, you know, it's all laid out in Article 3. So I don't, I guess I'm just wondering, the, it's the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission has, has the authority for this designation. And perhaps if I could read, since we're on this topic, you know, I think it's important that we go to the actual charter and understand the language, because I think people get a little upset when they don't actually look at, we call it a statue, or whatever the terminology is, this is our town charter. So obviously, they're saying that if, you know, there's a significant change, which would include changes of grade, straightening, removal of stone walls and/or mature, mature trees, but excludes routine maintenance and repairs. So it...
I don't know if that speaks to Nancy's concern, though.
But Nancy, I'm saying, the town is a property owner, the park is a property owner, property owners, property rights are not impacted at all. Now I'm switching target.
Sure.
And what I'm talking about is the roadway.
Right. No, I, I understand, I understand it, but that, that is, that's, it's a concern, and it's something that I, I want to be sure before I, I move forward. That's what I'm trying to tell you. I'm fundamentally with you. I just want to get these questions answered, that's all.
Okay, so I, obviously, well-taken, but I just want to point out
Okay.
that it's all right here in Scenic Road, Article 3. This is, this is the language. And if we need to improve this language, then, you know, fine, let's improve it. But I think this application is a great way to have that dialogue through the Planning and Zoning Commission with all parties around the table, so that we can actually go forward and have this, this discussion. It's not only for Old Greenwich, it could impact other areas like Bruce Park and other places that are south of the Merritt Parkway. So that's why we're asking for permission to go ahead with our application.
Okay, thank you, Candace. And I have been approached by somebody in another part of town, little different situation about, so this is going to be something that's a hot topic in the next couple of months. Paul Pollez, he wanted to say something? Good morning, Paul.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. My name's Paul Pollez, I have been a lifelong Old Greenwich resident, and I'm here as a founding member of the Greenwich Preservation Trust to support this application. I'm also on the Architectural Review Committee for over 30 years, and last night at our meeting, we discussed the fact that our town character and, and the preservation of our history is also based on the scenic landscape as opposed to just the buildings. It's fine to preserve architecture, but it's also important to preserve the settings. And in this case, we're talking about the gateway to Old Greenwich with two very important institutional buildings, the Parrot Library and the, and the Congregational Church, as well as Binny Park. And it really sets the tone for your arrival to Old Greenwich. The P O C D, as one of its guiding principles, as Candace mentioned, talks about preserving our, the character of our town, and it's important that we consider the composition. I know that, having been part of the whole roundabout reconstruction and bridge reconstruction, we understand that maintenance is important, we understand that safety is important, but there have to be, there has to be a balance. And the scenic road provision establishes just another level of balance and scrutiny so that all of the alternatives are explored. It may be that we have to compromise and that the traffic has to move a little slower, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. In order to not have the size rotary that you might find on Route 1, and if you drive up through Massachusetts and the Cape, you see these massive rotaries all over the place, and then they funnel down into little, little local roads, but the impact of something like that on Old Greenwich, on that particular area, would be pretty devastating in terms of the, the approach into town. And as Candace said, what we're asking for is that this get moved forward in the public forum so that we can, we can all discuss this and add a little bit of a layer of protection. It doesn't mean that we can't make safety improvements and traffic improvements in the future, but it's, it's an added layer of protection, almost like a historic designation that would make, allow everyone in the process to know that this is an important place and not just a place where you can propose things. not just a place where you can propose things that are going to change the character. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Does anybody else want to weigh in on this?
Yes.
Monica.
Thank you.
Good morning.
I'm Monica Prejoda. I am in my second term of the RTM, but that's not why I'm standing up here today. I'm standing up, I've moved here 27 years ago, and two of the treasures of Old Greenwich, and I would say the real treasures of all of Greenwich, are Binney Park and Greenwich Point. And Candace covered, and Paul, I think, covered the real details of the importance of the park to the character of the town, and that's what I'm concerned with, and its beauty. As you have all expressed yourselves, this is just part of the bureaucratic process that we have to go through, and I would say, agree that everything has to be looked at, and departments have to weigh in and so on, but I also agree with Candace that it's not at this point because, but Mr. Michael brought up a real good point about the roundabout. As a resident, and maybe I didn't look at the website every single day or a few times a day, but it was a big shock to me and surprise that at that time, a couple of years ago, the rotary was proposed. I think if something like this had, and there was great Old Greenwich outcry and beyond those borders against it, but it was a surprise to me. I can't speak to everybody, and also, this morning, I had another surprise, I heard from somebody, oh, did you know that the bridge is going to be raised, just like part of the roundabout? And I know we have to address flooding issues and so on, but that was a surprise. So Candace brought up, and I'll wrap up because everybody's busy, but the word transparent. And I think what we're talking about here is transparency and not surprises. So this is just the first step, get the okay. I've been on the RTM just one full term, two years, and a lot of stuff doesn't get approved. And the things that do, people have to speak and make it known what their position is. So anyway, this is just, again, part of the process, the bureaucracy, which is bureaucratic for you and for us, and Candace did most of the work. So that's all I would say, transparency.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you.
And we agree with that, and again, I thank Candace for her testimony today, and also her time and Alan's time of meeting me at Binney Park a few months ago. Yes?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Renee Siblottnik, I'm a Cosco resident. You are much more familiar with the town code than I am, but as I read it, my understanding is what these people are asking is for you to put it on the RTM call, so the RTM can give you permission, basically, to sign the application. I don't think the RTM would be ordering you to sign it. Therefore, if you have second thoughts, you've got weeks, if not months.
Hmm.
So this is just the first step
Yeah.
for you to put on the RTM call, so I don't think you have to lock yourselves into concrete.
No, thank you, I appreciate that. No, we understand that the, again, I'm waiting for more, some answers from, you know, the town attorney that wrote the opinion, but also from Katie. We've, I know Jim's concerns, as he stated him today, but, you know, I, I don't think it's, it's, you know, a bad thing to wait just one month so we can just get that straightened out, and then we can push it back. Again, if I don't have the answer, and you could smile and shake your head, but if we don't have the answers, and I'm just going to say, well, I'll just let the RTM decide, I'd like to have the answers, I'd like to know when I'm sending them first, okay? So you're going to add something different, Monica, or are you going to, okay, go on, you can, floor is yours.
And Monica Prejoda, now I'm speaking as a member of the RTM, that I just realized that the budget process starts in May, and if you put this off, a simple request, if you put it off until April, again, I might be ignorant about it, being a newbie, but it seems to me there may not be enough time to put it on the budget, and meanwhile, other departments will get approvals for whatever, and there goes the scenic road approved, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, this is not a, you're not asking anything financial?
No.
So that-
We're not, and you're again not locked into it.
Yeah, no, that's not going to affect anything. By pushing it back-
We're not, but other departments may ask for budget-type things which may impact-
But it wouldn't preclude a discussion on this.
Okay, okay.
It's not, it's not, it's not in the budget, so it's not something that we would have to, it's, this is a separate, we're going to be discussing other things at the RTM in the next few months besides the budget, too.
But town roads are in the budget, and so is a bridge that I came to understand this morning to be raised, as the rotary a few years ago, and there was a great uproar about it, also was meant to be raised, that's all I'm coming out.
Okay, thank you, Monica. Thoughts, Phil, Lauren?
Well, since Fred, you need to put it in front of the RTM, if you're not comfortable and want to wait a month, I can appreciate where you're coming from. I know that the RTM will make their own decision, and they'll talk to the constituents in the 12 districts, but there is a sort of clout, as you will, if the first selectman is the one that's putting it on, there's sort of a, okay, he supports it, so if you're not comfortable with that, I support waiting another month until you are.
Since you're asking me for comment. I'm generally very sympathetic with the, the request of the Old Greenwich residents, and also with the mission of protecting the scenic beauty, and I encourage all of you to come out when we weigh in on townwide advertising, and commercial advertising, and what that does to the character of our communities as well, because I think it, it's all wrapped in and holistically. I do try to be consistent in the way I look at governmental decisions, and to that end, I think process is important. We're still a new board, there's been a lot of, we've jumped right in, we jumped right in with a lot of workshops and a lot of issues, and we're all coming up to speed. I think it, it is prudent to gather the information, both pros and cons, to understand how best to make the case for a scenic road if we're actually signing on to it, and also to identify the unintended consequences or, or know whether there are any. And I think we just don't have enough information to, to make the soundest decision on it if forced to vote on it. I would vote to put it to the RTM, because I think they're the ones who would decide whether the first selectman puts it forward, and all my vote would end up being is a vote to defer to the people, which I generally agree with, but I think we'll make a stronger case for that, having had the input of the town departments who have preliminarily told the first selectmen and indeed this board that they have concerns. So in the, and I'm going to come back to this in comments on later items, in the interest of consistency, I would say we're, we're better following a, a process that will lead us to a better governmental decision, so.
Thank you. And this is by no, I don't want you to think we're kicking it down the road. Again, what Sluck Woman Oberlander said is true, we're a new board, we're dealing with lots of issues, and when one of the town attorneys says, hold off, you know, and not, it wasn't a no, it was just, we have some concerns with it, I give you my word, we will follow up with him and Katie, and we'll work with DPW, and if our concerns, we're fundamentally with you on this, we just want to make sure, I don't want to, again, ask an opinion and then just turn around and say, well, okay, I'm going to put us, push it aside and just go there anyway. We're probably, we may end up doing this, you know, at the next meeting, and, but I just want to circle back with them, and I'll circle back with you, and it won't be forgotten, I give you my word. So we'll put that off until the next board meeting in two weeks, won't even be a month, be two weeks, and I'll get right back to you. We'll get those concerns there, and again, we may end up right where you are. Yes, Candace?
Would it be possible for us to receive written statements of concern from your various departments and attorneys?
Yeah.
So that we have transparency
Sure.
on what you're hearing and, sorry. I would like to have written statements from the various departments and planner, and you gave me some from the attorney, but it was redacted, and I don't know what was redacted. So we would like transparency on everything that you're considering.
Sure.
Just because that's really why we're here today, all in all, is transparency.
Okay.
So if we could have that before your next meeting
Yes.
that would be much appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Lauren?
I just wanted to add, in the context of transparency, one of the things that we're hearing from the community, and Monica, you mentioned it, you found something to be a surprise, you know, Fred's got the Community Connections vehicle in the email format every Friday, so these are the types of things that, you know, we're looking to communicate more broadly across the community with respect to things that are happening in the town. Fred goes out to all the department heads and says, you know, what would you like to announce? So give us your feedback on what you want to see announced as well.
Yeah, that's a great point, thank you, Lauren. If you, if you're not on those e-blass, or you don't have my email, you can go to the webpage that, and you can all give us stuff to put in there that are community-based, that the, if you think the residents should be aware of, just doesn't have to come from this building, so.
If I can add to that transparency topic, again, speaking as an RTM District Six Chair, often, there are capital projects that are, you know, underway or being considered, and we're not informed of them. For example, on Lattin's Rock, I guess there's an aquarium pump station, nobody knew anything about it or what it was, and it was my understanding it was approved two years ago. So as for the RTM, we would really like to have communication on capital projects that are going to affect our communities, and this is across town. So just on that topic, and I appreciate all your efforts.
No, thank you, that's, you know, it's, it's a great point, we, excuse me, I put the, the e-blass right before the CIP hearing, I put that we were going to be there, and the public came out to address the CIP document, but they were, as usually happens, they were focused on the most controversial ones, so lots of the things in there didn't get the time of, you know, but, you know, maybe there's a way we can, you know, do some more with that in the future, but we'll certainly, certainly address this in two weeks. I give you my word. And we'll get the, I'll ask the departments to get the written answers out to you. Okay?
Thank you.
And then Alan and whoever else wants, send them to you, too?
Yeah, I'll go send it to you.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate it, and we heard you. Thank you. Okay, next up is the proposed ordinance to create an energy management commission with Pat Sesto.
Good morning, Patricia Sesto, Director of Environmental Affairs. I was before the board a couple of weeks ago to introduce to this new board the proposal to create an energy commission. As a reminder, this is an outgrowth of a plan that was adopted by your predecessors back last June as part of an overall energy examination. The lead message from that report was we need an energy commission with specialized interests associated with energy, as well as relevant town departments and entities to look at this. It's not a conservation issue, it's just much wider and more technical than that. At the time, you had a proposed ordinance, and since then, I've had the pleasure of going through the committees and before the RTM, received feedback from them, some very specific, some more broad, some contradicting, and some consensus-building. So I did, I think each of you on your desks this morning found a revised version. I by no means believe that this will be the end of the revisions, but I'm hoping this is a good first pass at being responsive to what I heard from the RTM, where there were points of consensus and where there were points of necessary clarity. So I do actually have for you, this is the same, it's just the track changes are just eliminated.
Thank you.
So you can see it's one, one fell suit, so I find it sometimes difficult to read track changes, you need them, but you can't read through them, so it's a bit of work The major issues that I heard from the RTM committee meetings, well, I will say that all three of them, so we went to finance, to legislative rules, and to public works, that they were conceptually in favor. Two of the groups actually took a merit vote and it passed. Finance did not take a vote, since it was only a first read, but they said the takeaway was, this is a good concept, we need more attention on various things. So with that ray of light, we went forward. The other issues were, the regulatory status of the commission was questioned by several, so we've now added in section 2-134, powers and duties, that the commission is an advisory board. That's always been the intent, so that's just now abundantly clear. This is meant to be an asset for the town departments to rely on. We have over 130 buildings owned by the town. We have two gentlemen who are in charge of facilities, Al Manelli for the town buildings, and Dan Watson for Board of Ed. Many of our buildings are old, it requires a lot of attention, they do it skillfully, but to think that they also have the time to prioritize who should get audits, manage those audits, figure out what to do with them, is a lot of work to expect existing staff to take on, and indeed, since 2008, when we signed on to the declaration to reduce our energy consumption by 20%, I think we've done Grass Island and the Town Hall. So it's, having been involved in the Town Hall audit, it's a lengthy process. So if this commission operates properly, it will be an asset to help those entities make decisions within their departments. Some of the other changes, you'll see in the notes of your annotated version, we've had some back and forth whether this group should have a set goal of 20% short-term, 40% long-term. Some say, yes, you need to have a goal-driven ordinance, and others say, I don't even know if you can attain those, so I'm not sure why you're putting them in there. So that still needs to be sorted out, that conflict. And reporting back, making sure that this commission is in fact achieving something was another common thread, and you'll see in E on your last page, that language has been modified, I'm sorry, F has been modified. So we always had the obligation to prepare a written report for the Board of Selectmen. So this legislative and rules was very explicit in the language they wanted to have included as to what that report back would be, and then report back also to the RTM, which I assume Board of Selectmen and RTM have an avenue of communication. Budget was another common question, what is the budget of this? It's a question that I feel it's irresponsible for me to answer at this time, because I don't know. This group of people are going to come in, they're going to set their plan, their priorities, so for me, or our ad hoc committee that's recommending this, to say, these are the buildings that you're going to audit first, and here's what those audits are going to cost, and that's our, our budget, it doesn't make sense that the whole point of the commission is for them to look, work with the departments, prioritize where they want that first look of audits to come from, and then from that comes their budget. So I understand that that's a frustration, that people want to know the fiscal impact. My response to that has been, the fiscal impact of this commission would be no different. My response to that has been, the fiscal impact of this commission would be no different than if our town staff was able to do this. Somebody should be doing this now. This is an expenditure we should be making, we just haven't had the bandwidth to make it happen. So there's no new expenditure that we shouldn't already be working towards, and I can't, I don't believe it's responsible for me to try to define that now, and hopefully you'll agree and support me on that, because that's been a pretty big button of contention. And then I think the other piece that is confusing for people, and I can see where the confusion is coming from, because as an outgrowth of that ad hoc committee report, my department is putting up this proposal, but the proposal is to have this commission operate out of the Office of the First Selectmen. It is going to be leaving conservation. Again, our scope, our area of interest is too narrow. This group really needs to have a broader look at what's going on in town, and that to me is appropriate to come out of the office as a first selectman. So that was always the intent, so I'd love for that to be cleared up. It is not meant to stay with our department. So the last ad hoc committee that we have goes away, it goes to a broader interest group, and any budgetary requirements would be, the commission would make the pitch to you all for the department, the Office of the First Selectmen, to include those expenditures in your budget, and then should those be approved through you, through BET, and then the RTM, then the commission has the finances to move ahead and conduct those audits or consulting work, or whatever it is that they've established they need. I think that covers it.
Thank you, Pat. Yeah, and you've answered lots of the questions, of the concerns that we've heard. The, you know, one of them was, you know, this could be a runaway commission at some point, and not controllable and not answerable, but they clearly, you know, without the Board of Selectmen, without the BET and the RTM, you know, they're, they're right, they're controlling interests here, so that's, the fact it's an advisory board, you've put that in, and I think it's very good. Yeah, I, this is a very important thing for all of us. I certainly want this passed and implemented. The, as you know, as you went around, we're still getting emails about this and calls. And the good thing is, I think most people are very supportive of what's going on there, they're just, and I think you've ratcheted down the fear a lot and the concern, a lot of the concerns, which is great. I don't know if we're 100% there. My only concern is if we sent this right away, I don't want this to be defeated, rejected in its entirety, so this is, this is very important. I think that we have to get this passed in the RTM. I think you're 90% of the way there. You know, one of the things that we keep hearing about, and I don't know how to get around it, you know, this commission versus committee, and as you've pointed out, we've had this before as a subcommittee of this Conservation Commission, and nothing really went, didn't, you know, went too far with it. And I, I don't mind the boldness of it, but certainly we have to get the RTM on board, too, and I think there's significant support for it there. I don't know if we have a majority yet, and I'm trying to gauge that, so as far as, in addition to the commission versus committee debate, is there anything else there that you think would come up again? I mean, I, I think you've addressed most of the concerns that I've heard. Was there anything else you think might be a sticking point?
So the committee versus commission, I would, obviously I'm arguing for it being a commission. I think having it part of the code of ordinances establishes the expectations. It establishes that this is an important topic, and we expect our departments, BET, RTM, to give this due consideration. It's not regulatory, so we don't have to worry about that sort of conflict, but it does give it a weight, and I believe that that's an appropriate intent to convey. A commission also has structure of time, so when administrations come and go, the committee doesn't come and go. Because it operates out of the Office of the First Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen, the First Selectmen, through budgetary considerations, will always have some influence on that, you can choose to not fund it. But I would hope that that is going to prove itself highly useful. So the commission has a better lasting stability through commissions or through administrations over time, and I believe that this is important enough to convey through a commission.
Thank you. Lauren?
If I can just speak on the committee versus commission, because I've given it a lot of thought, and as I hear what the community is looking for, and I'm not diminishing the importance, but we have other committees, such as the First Selectmen's Advisory Committee on Residents with Disabilities, and it's a committee, and I wouldn't want to give the impression that this initiative is more important than making our 130 town-owned buildings ADA accessible. Fred, you talked about a pedestrian safety committee. Again, that's life and death. I, I just worry about
Your point is well taken.
Where we send a signal that one thing that the community cares about may or may not be more important than another thing that the community cares about. And with respect to the budget, I know we didn't talk about it, so I know this would be incremental, and maybe this is a question for the BET, and Jill, fresh off the BET, you know, where does the budget better sit for an audit? Does it sit in a committee commission versus the actual Board of Ed budget, for example, that would do the audit for the Board of Ed-owned buildings or managed buildings versus, you know, Al's budget for the other buildings? You know, where is the appropriate place for that line item to sit?
So I, I agree with your point on the committee versus commission aisle. That is a very well-taken point. For me, I'm thinking of the committee that we came out of, the Conservation Commission Committee and the Committee, the sustainability work that we've been doing has not panned out. It has not absorbed the Town Hall, Big Town, T, Board of Ed in a bigger embrace, so that would be my concern. I did not mean to diminish other committees that exist, thank you. You do make a good point, too, about who's going to pay for those things, and again, that would be one of my points of resistance about why we should be setting a budget now, because those are excellent points, and I agree, they have to be worked out.
Thank you. Jill?
Yeah, thank you. So first, I want to start off by thanking you, Pat, for all of the work that you've been doing over the last couple of years to even develop this proposal, which is so important, and for your advocacy and leadership on it, and it does not go without recognition by this entire board, particularly over this last few weeks, as you've been out talking about and explaining this proposal to the various RTM members. There are a couple of things that were mentioned at the RTM, which I think are beneficial for members of the public who might be listening tonight, who maybe didn't hear them the other night. You had a statistic about other communities and their effectiveness at adopting energy conservation programs, and whether they had a commission or not, I believe, is my recollection. Can you just remind me and remind the public of that as well?
That, which is one line in our 24-page report, has taken on a bit of life of its own. So that was an examination of Energize CT, which had a program that ceased in 2018. They were funded by monies that were diverted by the state legislature, so they ceased. They, in cooperation with other nonprofits, had worked on this program where people would sign up to the pledge, the 2008 pledge that Greenwich signed on to, to reduce their energy consumption by 20% by 2018. Their last update, the map, there's 28 towns that received either a 10% or 20% reduction based on Energize CT's tracking, and then I went back and looked at those to see who, on their websites, who had reference to some sort of energy commission or committee or sustainability or green energy. There's not uniformity in naming conventions in the least. Based on that research, 23 of the 28 had energy commissions, committees of some sort. Then I went back and looked at the towns that were not successful, and of those who were not successful, how many of them had energy committees or commissions? 11. Michael Spilows, who seems to love a good detail, he then went back and went even deeper into the individual towns' ordinances, charters, websites, so he did a level of investigation based on current conditions that took the numbers that I had presented and said, but wait, there's more to this story. So if those numbers were the numbers that I'm saying this is why we need an energy commission, I would totally back off on them and say, just disregard it. Even with Michael's work, and I've not been able to sit down with him and understand fully what he counted in, what he counted out, the reasoning, I would say even with a magnitude of plus or minus, the message is still, towns seem to be more successful when they have a dedicated effort to this. And I will also say, the frustrations of diving into towns too deeply is you tend to move away from being able to articulate something in a conclusion sort of way. Did the towns succeed or not succeed? Were they looking at five buildings or 130 buildings? Did they have the proper support behind them? Did the chairman move to Florida and then the commission went defunct? I mean, there's all sorts of things that, as 169 towns of Connecticut, we, if you look high enough, you can see trends, but once you start digging in deeper, trends fall apart, because there's too many asterisks that go with things. So I look at that statement in a overarching lesson, not one to base your decision on.
Right, thank you for that clarification. So not controlling, but would support the effort, assuming that, based on the data, whether it be yours or Mr. Spilows, that communities that do have a commission are generally more on track to be successful with energy conservation. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, and I would say we're lesson number one.
Right.
We've not had a dedicated effort.
Right, and, and to that point, talking about the budgetary impacts, the, the outcome of some of these commissions, programs, and efforts is actually not, not just conservation on energy, but cost reduction to the communities as well. So it doesn't necessarily have to end up over the, the medium or longer term to be cost-intensive, it could actually be a positive for our bottom line.
Yes, and I think that perhaps is what is confusing to some people, having the Director of Environmental Affairs spearheading this effort. I think the motivation for this, for the town, is first and foremost financial. Even in our own homes, businesses, every year, we look and see, what can we be doing better, whether it's weather stripping on our windows or replacing our windows, the Empire State Building replacing their windows. It's something we should always be looking into, and the conservation of energy, CO2, I'm hoping that that commission, and I fully expect that commission to weigh that as part of their consideration, but I, I am smart enough to know that finances is what's going to really drive the efficacy of the program.
I like, thank you. And then the, the third, let's see if I can remember what my third comment was. Maybe not. I do want to reiterate that I think that the naming convention, that of course, none of us want to, we want to ensure that all members of our community that participate on either a committee or a commission know that their efforts are really appreciated and valued. I did think that part of the point was that some of these technical issues are not only very complex, but also span a number of years, and that there was the value in having that technical expertise in, in the standalone entity, and so I, oh, now I remember what the other, thank you. I knew if I talked long enough, it would come back to me. Your revision took out the appropriation, the authorization to appropriate language, what had been your sub-paragraph F, and I just want to be clear
Why?
Whether, was that just gratuitous language and not needed in order for the, the budget documents? I haven't spent enough time looking at the ordinance and your changes since we just got it this morning, to include budgetary numbers. I just want to make sure that we don't put forward a document that's too limiting going forward. I recognize that you can't predict what the budget may be, and that will, in truth, end up in the decision of the First Selectmen's office, but I want to make sure we don't omit language that we might need.
Understood. One of the committees had raised the issue that the citation of the Charter, Article 2, Section 21, was insufficient, as there's other things in Article 2 that would guide how the commission would spend money, and I believe, this is my interpretation of what they're saying, so they might take issue with, but this is me trying to resolve what I think their point was. There was concern that there's language that says the commission can enter into contracts, consultants, and the like, and there is further down in Article 2, which is Section 32, which talks about commissions and departments can only enter into contracts that reflect what they have budgeted. So in taking out F, I literally took the language from Article 2, Section 21, inserted that into E, and then added additional language to encompass Article 2, Section 32. So not only do we have the process by which we have to get our budget, but then it's explicit that we understand that we are bound to only spend the money that we've been allocated.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Pat, real quickly, the 11 municipalities that had a, was it a committee that, or a commission that didn't pan out? There was 11 that did. Were they committees or commissions?
I don't know.
Okay.
And
But most did that had commissions, they had, it produced
There is, so Wilton, they received their 20% goal, they have an energy commission, but it's not part of the town charter. So that's where you start getting all these wonky nomenclature things and how people address their individual town needs. So on that, I would say we should reflect what's best for Greenwich and not look to others for that aspect as guidance necessarily.
Thank you. And would you be, have some time for a meeting with some of the people in the RTM in the next week?
Oh, yeah.
I want to get this back in two weeks, and I want to get this to the, as I promised the folks before you, I want to address it at the next meeting.
Be happy to.
Yeah, so I think we're almost there on this.
You like it, yes.
So I want to send it there, fairly certain it's going to pass out of there, so, all right, I'll, I'll be in touch with you on that. And thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
We're lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we go to new business, and Deputy Chief Mark Marino, on some proposed charter and code changes regarding parking fees. Morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your time today. So I'm here in my capacity with Parking Services with a couple of proposals, one more far-reaching than the other with regards to the impact on town, on the town. As, as we're aware now, the state of Connecticut recently enacted a state law effective January 1, which imposes a 6.35% sales tax on parking fees. So obviously, these, the state, the state tax is applicable in Greenwich. It includes all of our meter collections, permits, sales, daily parking fees, and our metered space rental fees. So we, we received notification about this in December. Since that time, Parking Services has had discussions with the town administrator, the town law department, and also the town finance department. We've been putting plans in place to record the appropriate sales taxes that have been, based on fees that have been assessed since January 1, so that we can make the appropriate, you know, tax payments when they come due in February. As it sounds, as it stands right now, 6.35% of the town's annual parking revenue, which amounts to approximately $2 million, for meter collections, daily parking fees, and meter fees, and meter rentals, uh, will become payable to the state finance, uh, uh, to the state. Uh, Finance Department estimates that, estimates that figure to be approximately $10,583 per month, uh, in lost revenue for the town, uh, as it stands right now. Uh, with that in mind, uh, Parking Service initiated a review of the town's current parking fee structure, uh, and I'll just highlight a few things that we looked at. Uh, the hourly meter rates, which, uh, based on the long-term or short-term meters, is 50 cents or 75 cents per hour, uh, which is, uh, less than most of the municipalities in the area, which typically charge, uh, uh, a dollar or, or more per hour. Uh, we looked at, uh, when the last rate increases were. Uh, meter rates, uh, have been, uh, con, uh, steady since 2007, uh, when they saw their last increase. Uh, the meter rentals, which are, if someone's doing construction at a particular location and they need to block off a parking space for the day, uh, were there, uh, currently charged $25, uh, that has, uh, not been increased since 2009. Uh, daily parking fees at our train stations, uh, which are currently $5, have not seen an increase since 1999. Uh, so, uh, the, uh, and the annual permit fees for the train stations, uh, have not been increased since 2017. Uh, we also looked at our enforcement hours when we could, did a little bit of a comparison with a lot of the other municipalities, uh, in the area. Uh, we currently enforce, uh, parking regulations between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM, uh, Monday through Saturday, uh, which is less than what a lot of other municipalities, uh, enforce. Many of them start at eight and go as late as nine, 10 o'clock at night. So we're on the, uh, positive end there with regards to that. Uh, since the renewal period, uh, for 2020, uh, permits occurred in 2019, uh, so the renewal period was, uh, ongoing in 2019 before this, uh, tax law became effective. Uh, the permit, the fees for those permits are not subject to the new tax. Uh, and what that means is that if we do, uh, raise permit fees, uh, in response to the, uh, current tax implication, uh, many of the permit holders won't see an increase in their permit fees until 2021, when they renew, uh, for that year. So, uh, as a result, Parking Services is recommending rate increases. Uh, I provided, uh, a spreadsheet which kind of outlines, uh, you know, the increases that we are proposing, uh, that the Board of Selectmen consider, uh, uh, in response not only to the, to the tax, uh, but, uh, increases in, uh, maintenance and operating costs, uh, over the course of the years, many years in which a lot of these, uh, rates have not been increased. Uh, so that's kind of where we stand.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Mark. Um, yeah, I, well, this, I mean, this came to everybody's attention because of the, the state. Uh, can I claim innocence, Kenny, or no? Since I was up there last year?
You forget, we're entirely about you.
I didn't vote for this, so. Um, the 6.35%, uh, I mean, that's the, I guess, the catalyst for this, but, um, what is the percentage beyond that that would be the increase? Because I know, you know, if, one of the fees you said hadn't been, hasn't been raised in 20 years. Um, and I don't like increased fees, but, I mean.
We're ve, we're, we're very sensitive to that also. We understand the impact that this will have on, you know, many of our residents and employees that work in town. So, uh, we tried to come up with, uh, what we felt was, uh, a reasonable increase. Uh, looking at parking permits for the train stations, uh, we're proposing a 10% increase. Uh, again, uh, those rates haven't increased since 2017. The majority of these, of the people affected by a rate increase there won't see that until 2021. Uh, the 10%, if you look at that, uh, off the top, 6.35% is that, is going to go to the, uh, to the state, because what we're doing is the tax implication or the, or the tax liability is being including, included in all of our parking fees. So, uh, a 10% increase, uh, in parking permit fees, 6.35% of that increase goes directly to the state, paid by the town to the state, uh, which leaves us with a, a 3.7 increase over a period of about four, four to five years.
Yeah, just on that point, um, and I, I think this is a communication point to the residents as well. It's not just the, the, the tax on the increase, but now you're assuming the tax on the, the existing permit fees, not for this year, but going forward. So there's a, if you look at the numbers, there's a very small increment of the increase that's actually going to the town to cover the increased costs. And that's, and that's what I was, uh, looking for in terms of the increase in maintenance costs, so in the aggregate dollars. Are we, I, have you set the, um, the increases at a sufficient level to both cover all of the tax on the existing plus the new incremental, plus cover the, the operating and maintenance increase? Um, that, that was really my, my question and concern. The other question had to do with the, I started to ask you, and I'm, I'm, wasn't, I don't think I was explaining it so well. There seems to be, uh, three times demand for the existing permitted spots at the municipal lots. Uh, and I wasn't fully able to parse through the document you sent us this morning on how other communities price their, their permitted spots, but the, uh, incremental increase on the daily rate for a person who doesn't have a, who, who's waiting for years to get a permit, has no choice if they have to drive to park in one of the limited, uh, day spots at a higher day rate than the, um, rate being charged, the permit holders. So they not only can't get a permit, but they are then, uh, in a group of a limited number of spots with a higher day rate, and, um, if those spots are filled, even by people who aren't paying for the day rate, they pay a higher, uh, ticket price if they park in a permitted spot.
Right.
So I just was wondering whether, when you, especially now, since the permit rates are in effect, effectively till next December, whether you had looked at the, the ratio, the demand, whether our pricing is consistent with other communities, and also with how we want to charge for parking, and also the ratio of day spots to permitted spots, and whether it provides people that are on that waiting list for many years, a, um, a, a different option. So that, that's really where my, my questions came from.
So, uh, the, the day, the day per, or the day parking spaces, uh, you know, basically, you know, if, obviously, demand exceeds our, you know, available spaces, which is why we have a waitlist. Uh, and we aggressively try to reduce that waitlist, you know, as often as possible. Day, the ratio of day spaces, uh, per permit, based on, uh, per, or, in relation to, uh, permit spaces, is based on the size of the, really, the, the amount of spaces available in a particular location. Uh, and what we consistently do is look at, uh, parking demand at a particular location. So if the day spaces in Riverside are not being fully used on a, on a, over a cor, a period of time, as we look at it, then we'll consider increasing the number of permit spaces available in that particular parking lot to adjust the ratio. Uh, if we see that there's a high demand for daily parking in a particular location, then we may have to readjust the allocation also to allow for those people that have been waiting patiently on the waitlist to get a permit, uh, to at least have a place to park. At, at maybe not as reasonable a rate as a permit holder, but certainly more reasonable than many other rates, you know, uh, throughout the area. You know, I looked at, uh, a comparison today. Uh, I believe, uh, Stanford is paying $10 per day for a daily parking fee. Ours is five, so we thought that a seven, a $2 increase, uh, since 1999 was not, uh, outrageous.
Yeah, no, I'm, and I'm not commenting on how, on that, that increasing the day rate. I was wondering whether, um, with the great demand for the permitted spots and what appears to be a lower price structure for our permitted spots than other communities, whether, um, that it would help with management of the, the permits, whether people are just holding on to permits because you, it takes so long to get back on that list, and there's a, a lack of availability of day parking when you, when you want to just go for the day, whether there's a different metric, whether we, with a permit, whether the permit prices are set so, to manage the, uh, the resources effectively. That's, that's my question. I don't have enough information yet to understand that. I have no reason to, uh, to, about, need to question how you've, how you've made your proposal, but I would just ask that you consider that over this next year before the new permit prices go into effect, especially knowing that much of the increase is going to actually pay the tax as opposed to cover the additional expenses.
Okay. Understood.
So, of course, it's a big stink that we have yet another state, um, income-related or, uh, usage-related tax, especially for the folks in town that are of a lower income. It's going to impact them more. My question is around, um, you adjusted the fees, but not the hours. So I was thinking of, you know, the other municipalities that start at eight, and if we would consider starting at 8:00 AM, especially on Greenwich Avenue, because it is becoming more of a lifestyle, uh, destination with restaurants, coffee shops, things of that nature. I know, um, from sort of Haven Meyer Down, at 8:00, every parking spot is practically full at, at that time, so that might be something to consider.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so, I mean, we put this, the more we put this off, the more we're losing.
Time.
Oh, yeah, I'm ready to vote and sign.
Yeah, so, is there, um, any que, anything other than what's been said about getting another answer on that you, everybody's okay with the fees and the increases, some of which are very, very reasonable, some. Uh, is there a motion to accept, uh, Deputy Chief Marino's proposed, the Parking Services' proposed, uh, fee increases?
Um, I motion to, um, accept the proposed charter and code changes regarding parking fees.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Please, when you communicate it, note that the vast majority of these increases are due to the state tax, and it's not raising revenue really for the.
Yes, though, that was my, that was my next.
And it's a stink.
More selectmen demands more parking. Led by Camilla.
That's exactly what I said, Ken, right?
Oh, God, I can't get a break. All right, um, I appreciate that. Now we'll go to the second one, which is the.
Right. This, the first one's going to require quite a few signatures.
Yes.
Yes, I know.
Should we start signing?
We'll get to, we'll go through the second one, and then, you know, we can.
Do you have pen? Uh, oh.
We only have one.
We only have the, we don't have the final ones. We just have the draft form.
The red lines.
Uh, well, I, I have draft ones also. Uh, my intention is to have the, the red line versions signed, uh, and then they'll be submitted to.
If the information's correct. I do, mark it up.
Well, I have, yeah, I have to sign that.
Okay, yeah, all right, we'll sign this. And then, uh, I know that we'll sign that, and then now, and the folks over in a.
Want me to start, or you?
Yeah, yeah, you could start.
Can I sign in purple? I only have, I only have purple. Thank you.
Okay, so.
So while we're doing that, we'll talk about Stewart Drive.
The good folks over there, my, uh, my neigh, my neighbors have been waiting over there. So.
Long meeting, I know. Longest I've been, too.
Thank you for waiting.
Yeah, so, uh, second, uh, item on the agenda for Parking Services is Stewart Drive. Uh, over the last couple, over the last year or so, there's been a couple of changes to Stewart Drive, and a little bit of the history there is, uh, I want to say, uh, in 2008, uh, the Alan Corey, the then, then Director of Parking Services, uh, uh, made a proposal and was granted, uh, board approval to, uh, limit parking on one side of, on the north side of Stewart Drive and restrict parking. So for many years, there was no parking on the north side of Stewart Drive from Haven Meyer to Wendell. Uh, at some point, uh, around that time, Stewart Drive was, uh, incorporated into the residential parking program, uh, which also restricts parking. However, uh, apparently, no, none of the residents ever took advantage of that, uh, program, uh, and 2000, fast forward to 2018, I believe it was, uh, Parking Services recognized that, uh, residential permits were not being issued there, so, uh, requested that Stewart Drive be removed from the residential parking program, uh, and instead, uh, be placed on a restricted parking plan where parking was strict, was restricted on both sides of the street, uh, between 9:00 and 5:00, Monday through Friday. So, uh, we've heard from a number of different citizens, uh, from Stewart Drive, uh, and, uh, what we're proposing is that the parking restrictions on Stewart Drive be amended so that, uh, there is no parking restriction on the south side of Stewart Drive, and that the parking restriction on the north side of Stewart Drive remain in effect a, as it had been in 2008. Uh, 2008, uh, Mr. Corey, uh, recognized that, uh, having cars parked on both sides of the street at the same time causes a, uh, traffic impediment and, uh, congestion and, uh, the free flow of traffic, and, uh, we're in, we think that's the proper thing, is to have parking limited to one side on that particular street for those reasons.
Thank you. Um, and I am familiar with this, um, having lived around the corner from there, and I know there's several people have signed, uh, a petition to, uh, to get this lifted, and it, um, makes sense to me, and I am totally okay with it, um, but I don't know if my colleagues want to, to weigh in on.
No questions, I support it.
Okay.
Jill?
Yeah, I have no questions, but I, it just occurred to me that since you're here, both, um, you're here in your Parking Services role, maybe I can ask you to put on your public safety role and just assure us that there's no public safety concern with lifting the parking restrictions as well.
No, as long as we limit it to parking on one side of the street, uh, it should not be a problem.
Okay. Just finishing.
Um, can I, but, but can I just ask a question? I, the rec, uh, recommendation is that there's no parking restriction on the north side remains in effect, and that the town regulated restriction, which is the existing restriction on the south side, that's being repealed as well, so there would be no restriction on parking. Is that correct? I'm not understanding this.
What, what we're recommending is that there be no parking allowed on the north side of Stewart Drive and that there, there are no parking on the north side.
I see, yes, yes, great, thank you.
And the south side be no restrictions at all.
Great, thank you.
Wendell?
Okay. All right, well...
You may.
Yes, I think we want...
I believe you want some public comment.
Public comment. Chris Garofalo?
Chris Garofalo, Ten Stewart. I had some bullet points here, but I'm going to throw that out the window right now. I'm a native and I've lived on Stewart since 1986. And the best of my recollection is that when the parking restrictions went in, there was one person who, who put in for it, parking was restricted on both sides of Stewart, all the way down. None of us knew about it until the signs went up and then a number of us residents immediately objected and I forget the gentleman's name, made a...
What district?
I'm, I'm sorry?
In Parking Services?
Parking Services, yeah.
Right.
Right, okay. And, and he saw that a number of us that lived on the street were upset and he made it only on the north side. And that left enough room for parking, just barely. And then it was adjusted so that there was nothing down on Wendell. As far as I know, the ordinance was never changed at all and the signs were just removed after looking into it with this newest restriction. All right, and the removal of just one side of the signs will be a grave safety issue. Predating the parking issue, the town traffic department had done extensive studies, had put down the speed counters, and they had people going in excess of 60 miles an hour. Our, our street is straight, so it's an absolute runway. It's known as a cut-through for commuters going to Exit Five on I-95 and constant traffic through and through. And with the absence of parking, there is, it's just a speedway, all right, to, I can go back to the opening notes from First Selectman Camillo, and he, in quote, unquote, he said, "We found the wider the road, the faster they go." That's from two hours ago, all right. And that's exactly what happened. Once there was no parking, it became unsafe. I don't know how many of you know Sam Romeo? He told me long ago, "Get everybody to park on the street or you have a speed issue." And that was working until it got removed. And now with both sides gone, it's especially worse. We have Havenmire Lane and Stewart for school bus pickup and drop-off, okay? It's hard enough to get the people to stop for the stop sign there, but no, on the buses, but there's no consideration for all the students walking up Stewart Drive and crossing the street with all these commuters that are speeding through. So it's, it's a huge safety issue. It's a safety issue for us residents, just trying to walk our dogs, take a walk, back in and out of our driveways. I've had people with my blinker on, I've had people pass me on the right as I'm trying to turn right into my driveway going up on my lawn. It's, it's that insane. The commuters don't want to waste a second, okay? So it really is a huge, huge safety issue, all right, besides the obvious, if there are parking restrictions, where do, where do us residents park? Where do our guests park? Where do maintenance workers park? There are real issues of safety of the, the children, you know, and you can go down the line. Home values are affected. Realtor told me, once there are signs up, then it puts a question mark, why are there signs there? Is this a commercial zone? So we've got a number of, of huge issues here. I guess the, the biggest thing to me is just, I'm, I'm just waiting for the, one of these days, a kid's going to get nailed on this street, it's just way too fast. And we have four, four other households here that may want to make a comment.
Sure, thank you, Chris.
Hi, I'm Janine Cerelli and I live at 14 Stewart Drive and I just want to support all of Chris's comments, pretty much what he stated. We've been living there for about 10 years and, you know, just a few months ago, all of a sudden, we see these signs go up without any warning, any notice. Spoke to several other, other residents and everybody kind of said the same thing, that, you know, we weren't even giving a warning. It's a huge inconvenience. I have a one-car driveway and my husband and I have to park back-to-back and now I'm blocking the sidewalk. So again, that's a safety issue and a hazard for anybody trying to walk down the street. Again, friends and family can come during the week, you know, if I have maintenance workers. And I must say, if I saw these signs in front of my house 10 years ago when I was looking at the house, I would have never moved in. It would have been like, forget it. So, so I just, you know, ask that the signs are taken down on the one side. That's it. I just want to park in front of my house, that's all I want. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. You're not asking for much. Thank you so much. Does anybody else want to weigh in? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Jeff Barnett.
Mr. Barnett.
I've lived on Havenmire Lane for 25 years now and one of the, when I was looking at the house, the road obviously is a nightmare and that's a whole different issue than I'm not even going to go into now. I mean, if you want to take parking off of Stewart, let me park on Havenmire. I know that's never going to be allowed. So, you know, I'm directly across from Stewart on Havenmire Lane, so when I have company or whatever, you know, I park on Stewart Drive, walk across the street, which is an adventure sometimes. But, you know, and now that's being taken away. It's like, okay, now I can't have company, I can't have landscapers come. If I want to do any work on my house, I can't have contractors come. I, you know, as far as I know, there's a vast majority of people who did not want this as opposed to a very, very small number of people who wanted this. And I find myself going back to quote Spock very, very often lately. Needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few or the one. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Long and prosperous.
Jeff, your signature is here, though, to remove the no parking on Stewart Drive.
Absolutely.
Yeah, oh, okay. Oh, I'm...
I was speaking on behalf of...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Sorry, yeah. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
Members of the Board.
Mr. Peck.
Tim Peck. I'm an 18-year resident of Havenmire Lane, lifetime Greenwich resident. I'm not going to elaborate too much more on what's been said, other than to say Havenmire is probably one of the busiest collector roads in, in town. I think most everybody's familiar with that. Every morning, every afternoon, we listen to the school bus horn blow as people run through the stop sign on the school bus, especially in the afternoons, people are rushing around. It's, it's not having the ability to park, not only for us, living on Havenmire, as a, as a swing space during the day. I was brought to my attention that this had been changed when I stopped home for lunch and parked on Havenmire, because I can't get in and out of my own driveway on Havenmire, rather parked on Stewart and came out after lunch with a $50 ticket on my car. So it's, it's not only a safety issue, I feel, for parents picking up their kids, kids crossing the street, but also as a use for the neighborhood, really, it's residential. I walk my dog by there every day. 99% of the cars that park there are local residents, so you can point out, you know, exactly whose car they are. They're not commercial vehicles. It's not a commercial zone. It's people who want to park in front of their own homes. So I just wanted to speak in favor of that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
And also, I think this is the only time I've ever presented in this room during the day. I think I'm usually here at night.
Yeah, you'll have another shot tonight if you want to come back and talk about the budget. Thank you, Tim. Okay, Deputy Chief Marino?
So again, you know, we, Parking Services, and even from my position with the Police Department, we do support removing the parking restriction on the south side of the road. Limit parking, or restrict parking on the north side so that, you know, we can get traffic flowing through there without any bottlenecks and emergency vehicles as well.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to, oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to move it.
Oh, okay.
So moved.
To restrict the parking, to lift the, that the time-regulated parking restriction on the south side of Stewart Drive be repealed and that the no parking restrictions on the north side of Stewart Drive remain in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all for waiting, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
It was a long wait, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
That was a long meeting, but want to take up Lafayette lot?
Sure.
Sure, I mean, we, it's not on the script, but I mean, could we...
So we can amend the agenda?
To amend the men, the agenda.
Agenda to include discussion of the Lafayette lot.
Second.
Alls in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So, okay, we will now take up the Lafayette Place parking issue and here's the assigned copy for that.
Okay.
Mark, thank you.
So at, so at the last meeting, you know, we did have a discussion, I made a proposal to institute a annual perm, merchant permit availability in the Lafayette lot. There were some questions about, you know, this particular issue. I did have a conversation with the Law Department to get a better understanding of what your concern was with regards to the balance between revenue and maintenance costs. Actually, this particular proposal would reduce the revenue slightly, so that balance would be maintained. We're not looking to generate more revenue, we're actually looking to offer a parking alternative for long-term parkers that would be a little bit less and kind of make better use of that parking lot.
So stated in another, thank you for researching that and stated in another way, operating that lot is a governmental function, not a proprietary function, based on the revenue, the reduction in revenue and the costs.
Okay.
Yes, that's, that's a question, yes? Hopefully, hopefully you will confirm that we're operating it as a governmental, governmental function.
I don't know if I'm in a position to answer that question right now.
No, but you don't need to answer that now, but we should know one way or the other and then operate it accordingly.
Mm-hmm, okay. I did communicate with planning and zoning also with regards to that. Katie was very excited about the idea. I've gotten some, also some support from other business owners and, and landowners in the area, you know.
Can we shut the door? It's out there, it's pretty loud.
Thank you. Thanks. I just want to show you, if I may, so we have an idea of what we're looking at. So these, these are some photos that I took at 2:00 PM on a Friday after the...
Thank you.
Tuesday at midday.
Thank you.
So this is a parking lot that's right downtown. And, and I will say, in defense of the gentleman who was from the RMA, that I did go there on a Wednesday and the lot was full. However, what I found to find is that the Greenwich Hospital uses that particular lot because of their facility for overflow parking. When their, when their staff parking lot is full, they will direct people to that parking lot.
On Wednesdays or...
All until...
Well, it just so happened that that particular Wednesday must have been a perfect storm because it was during the time frame of the RMA meeting and Greenwich Hospital obviously had something going on because their lot was full. And they actually put signs in front of their garage and have attendants directing people to the Lafayette lot and then have an attendant there directing people. I think I can work with them on Wednesdays when this is, you know, may become really the only day that it becomes an issue and because they also have parking down below at the Prescott Hampton, which there's parking there that they can use. They use, they tend to take up the parking spaces in the parking lot first before they start using those spaces, but I think we can work out an arrangement with them, especially for Wednesdays during the parking.
Just looking it out.
Yeah, it's just a couple-hour block of time.
So my, right, so my proposal is to start a merchant lot program there, initially offer 20 permits for sale on an annual basis to either employees or businesses that would take advantage of that part and then reevaluate whether we want to increase that.
And is there a timeframe for this or is it just open-ended as far as, is this like a, not a pilot program, this is just...
No, I'd like it to become part of the charter.
Okay.
We can always, I would say we can amend it.
Okay.
If we need to.
Come back to us.
I'm not putting, I didn't put in the charter language what the, the number of spaces that I'm looking to make part of this program, the charter for the other, other merchant lots that we have. There's not a specific number of charter that I think that would require that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions or concerns?
No, I just want to thank Deputy Chief Marino for answering all of my questions.
I'm getting used to it.
We'll vote for his vote.
And I don't mind. I certainly prefer to have it done that way than...
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll move the, the recommended charter changes to adopt this, the proposed listed by Deputy Chief Marino.
Second. That's my first second.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, done, thank you. That's my, thanks.
I'll remember to bring a blackbird from now on.
Thanks, thanks, Mark, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thanks for waiting for our long...
We're getting there. Thanks again. Okay, moving along, under new business, item C, proposed legal services contract, Vincent M. Marino, who is with the firm Cohen &amp; Wolf. This is for our position of our town attorney. When we got sworn in, we said that we would look at, and I would look at all the departments and that we have here in Town Hall and see where we could look at for efficiencies and effectiveness and see if we can bring some of them up to the next level. And certainly, you know, this is one of them. The, it was run well and there was no reflection on the, the prior town attorney, but I just thought that I wanted a different... the, the prior town attorney, but I just thought that I wanted a different model for the town, and was contacted by several firms around, around the state, and looked into it and did some research, and spoke to a lot of people both in this building and beyond, and decided to, to make a change, and that is why Vincent Marino is here today, and I guess I can just read the resolution, then we could have the discussion. Resolution appointing Vincent M. Marino Esquire of Cohen &amp; Wolf as Town Attorney of the Town of Greenwich, Connecticut. Whereas, it is a recommendation of the First Selectman that Vincent M. Marino Esquire be appointed to serve as the Town Attorney for the Town of Greenwich, whereas in accordance with section 218 of the Charter for the Town of Greenwich, the Board of Selectmen may, subject to provisions of Article 15 of the Charter of the Town of Greenwich, appoint all heads of departments, which are under the supervision and control of the First Selectmen. Whereas pursuant to section 235 of the Charter for the Town of Greenwich, the head of the Law Department shall be the Town Attorney, which shall be an attorney admitted to practice law in all courts of the state, and who shall have practiced law in the state for at least five years. Whereas Vincent M. Marino Esquire is an attorney-at-law, admitted to practice law in all courts of the state, and is in good standing, and was admitted to practice law in the state of Connecticut on November 5th, 1996. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Greenwich, that Vincent M. Marino Esquire is hereby appointed as Town Attorney of the Town of Greenwich, commencing upon the adoption of this resolution, adopted at a duly noticed meeting of the Board of Selectmen on this 23rd day of January 2020. Okay. And I guess we'll open it up for some discussion and question, I know there's some questions here, so first, I wanted to.
Mr. First Selectman, yeah, if that was a, to put it before the body, maybe it needs to be by way, you read the resolution, but a second to that resolution, so.
I second the resolution.
I just don't want any, any procedural defects in the process.
I was looking at you.
I second it.
Okay, all's in favor?
Well, I think there's questions for, well, unless you want to get right to it.
I second the resolution.
I'm sorry. Questions, Selectwoman Oberlander?
Well, I have one question. I, I've had, I've had a number of questions that have been referred, as you know, both to Mr. Marino and to the First Selectman and Ms. Raven. I have one remaining question, that the retainer agreement was not included as part of our package, it was not posted publicly. You had sent me a proposed retainer agreement, I had a number of questions, was that revised at all, or is that the retainer agreement that, this is a question, I guess, for the First Selectman, but this is the retainer agreement that you intend to execute? And if so, it should be made part of the public record? So that's a question first, and then I do have another comment before we vote.
Sure. We, we're gonna, there was some questions that you had had, so I'd spoken to Mr. Marino about it, and he was certain, he was, you know, put in writing and stated here to answer all your questions, so I don't know if we're gonna, if you wanted to.
And just for the, for the record, I know the town has been well-served by Attorney Fox, and I have large shoes to fill, and I intend to do so as diligently as possible. My intent is to be available on-site as regularly as possible, as regularly as required, and at the beginning, more regularly than maybe Attorney Fox was here, because I'm going to need to understand the operations of, of the Town Hall and work with the various departments, so I'm going to be investing probably a significantly more amount of time at the beginning until I understand, rather than just simply say I'm going to come two days, two hours a day, or three hours a day, my intent is to come daily at the beginning so that I understand what's going on in the Law Department, so I get an understanding of what are the, the current matters that the town is a party to. There's a vast number of litigation matters that need to be addressed, and I want to make sure they're being properly addressed. So at the beginning, I would believe that it's going to be, I'm going to be more present than I may eventually get to a schedule more like Attorney Fox had. What that schedule will be will be driven by the needs of the town as we continue to advance in our relationship. And I always remain open to coming back and having a full transparent conversation of saying, is the town being served by this arrangement, and is it fair and reasonable under the circumstances? The intent of going to what is more of a, what I believe is a more traditional retainer model, rather than a hourly rate, is to save the town money. Because by doing it by the hour, if I were here eight hours a day, you'd be paying for eight hours a day. Well, under a retainer model, if I'm here eight hours a day, you're capped at that monthly retainer payment. So if the retainer payment is $12,500, and I bill $20,000 worth of time, the town is not paying more than $12,500. So it's a capped, it's a capped fee agreement with respect to the day-to-day operational things that are contained within the litigation. What would be outside the retainer would be standard under the circum, under all retainer relations, and that would be litigation matters or labor and employment matters. Now, it is not my intent to undermine the way the town is conducting itself presently. What I intend to do is to take a, more of a step back and observe how things are operating, and if there are recommended enhancements that can be made, I would bring them, my preference would be to bring them to the First Selectmen, and if appropriate, to this body, to make suggestions. You know, are we spending our money the, the, the best, and when it comes to litigation, when it comes to legal representation? Are there ways that we can be saving money? Are there ways that we can be avoiding, as I, as I discussed this morning at the Department Head Meeting, can we get into risk management where we're avoiding litigation, rather than having just repeat litigation with respect to whether it be employee issues, whether it be third-party complaints, land use matters as well? There's a number of different areas that we can look at to see if we can avoid litigation, or at least mitigate the expense of litigation. And that would be my intent, but before I took any action, I would bring it back to the First Selectmen and to this body, if appropriate, for purposes of a conversation. Because as I, I stated this morning, this is ultimately, this is your town, and it's, you are the chief elected officials of the town, and you should have a say in how your town is being represented. And so that would be my ultimate intent, you know, so at the beginning, I'm going to be more, maybe a little more quiet and more observant, and then I will start formulating over the course of the next couple of months, you know, my, my thoughts and my processes of what I see. I do often, if there are questions, I will make sure that you all have my business card, which has my mobile cell number on it. I am accessible 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. If I'm on a cruise, I'm accessible to you, and, you know, that's just the way government works. I am supported by a firm that has, I'm going to, I'm going to say about 50 lawyers, because I don't know who's come and gone today, but the Municipal Law Group specifically has about 18 lawyers within it. We will be, we, meaning that the, the Law Department here will be supported by my law group, and the day-to-day operations, that will all fall within the retainer. So if we have 10 lawyers doing day-to-day operational stuff, that will all fall within your retainer, so you're not going to be paying by the hour for five lawyers, if we have five lawyers working on various different things on an hourly basis. And, but if they fall outside the scope of the retainer, then they, they will be billed out at, at the hourly basis. But, and that's a general overview on how I plan to kind of operate under, under the retainer. If you would like to make the, I have no problem putting in writing if, and I thought I did, that I would be the primary point of contact, supported by Attorney Patricia Sullivan, who has already represented the town on various land use matters, and Attorney Barbara Schellenberg, who generally works with Pat on various land use matters, Attorney, and I don't believe it's in there, but Attorney Courtney George, who supports me on labor and employment questions. I know the town is represented by Shippin and Goodwin, which I think that is something that will continue, but if there are day-to-day operational things, questions like that, I would defer to Attorney George to see if we could again manage that within the retainer to save the town some money. And Attorney David Morrison, who is one of my partners in our transactional law, law practice group, who is currently representing or has represented the town with respect to some transactional matters. So those would be, that would be the primary core of the lawyers that I would be relying upon for support within the retainer, but the, all the lawyers within the firm arguably would be available to the town on an ad needed basis, which I would utilize based upon my discretion as matters arise.
Thank you, then. As far as the in-house lawyers that we have now, as far as coordination with them, would there be monthly, weekly meetings with them, and?
Yes. I, I met with them once already, and it's my understanding that they get together, they were getting together monthly, I believe, for a breakfast meeting, or for a lunch meeting at the beginning. I like to call them workshops. I think it's productive for lawyers to sit around and talk about their cases, and so that as a group, the Law Department can say, you know, who's handling what, and are we, can we creatively help each other through litigation by just talking? So we do that at my firm monthly. And at the beginning, I may suggest to the, to the other lawyers, based upon their, their schedule, that we do it more, maybe twice a month. I don't want to burden them with meeting times that are going to take them away from their, their, the need to practice law, but I think it's important for me to understand what is their workload, because I don't want any lawyer being overburdened with a, with a workload that they cannot properly manage, not to suggest that they are, but I, I need to understand that. Because as matters come up, obviously, it makes economic sense to do it in-house as much as we can, based upon our abilities, and I would expect to manage workflow that way, but in order to do that, I need to understand what their workflow is, and, and how they manage cases. I understand we're going to be having a retirement of one of the six members, and there's, you know, we had a conversation this morning with the tax assessor about that, and I will meet with the tax assessor and talk about how tax appeals will be handled going forward. But I, my expectation and my desire would be that it would be more or less business under, as, I don't want to call it business as usual, to suggest we're not going to be making changes, but I'm not looking to make substantial changes out of the gate, because I, I need to understand the organization and how the operation works in order to make meaningful suggestions on how we might be able to improve efficiency.
Okay. I had another question for you, and it just slipped my mind. The, if some, this isn't the question. You had mentioned working with, you know, at the beginning, maybe sitting down and doing like a seminar, if the town wanted it, you know, protocol, running meetings, and would that still be something that?
Yeah, so as part of our, and we represent as a municipal law group, about 13 communities presently, we provide free seminars to our constituent municipality clients on various topics, sexual harassment, workplace hostile environment, the Family Medical Leave Act, and how it's a, how it's actually applied, because most municipalities are not applying the Family Medical Leave Act appropriately. Just general, you've been elected, now what? You know, what do I do? How do I run a meeting? What's proper decorum? What are the rules? If you're, if you're in a public hearing, what's the difference between a public hearing and a public meeting? What is the public's right to participate during a public meeting versus a public hearing? You know, what is the difference between, or when is it appropriate to ask questions? And what's the difference between asking questions and deliberating? You know, because oftentimes, and this will happen more in land use than anywhere else, but, you know, you'll get a commissioner says, you know, oh, well, thank you so much, and the public hearing hasn't closed, the public has not yet spoken, and like, I'm in favor of this project. And, you know, that's, you know, that's bias and predetermination, and you're not supposed to express your, yourself until the appropriate time, but it happens everywhere. And so we try to counsel through education, you know, and so we recommend, after each municipal election, that we conduct a, kind of, a municipal government 101 seminar, where it's about an hour, an hour and a half, where it's, and we, we give out a, some seminar material, and we just kind of go through it, and we make it more of, the way I set up the materials was kind of like the questions that you might ask, and then it has some kind of discussion underneath it. But I find that in those types of seminars, where we're sitting in, in more, in a room like this, where it's a little bit less formal, but it's more conversational, because I try to make it so that it is, it's, people aren't being made to feel like I'm dictating, or I'm lecturing to them, but I like it to be conversational, and I found it to be quite effective doing it that way.
Thank you. And in addition to Board of Selectmen, RTM, and BET meetings, if we need you here at another meeting in Town Hall?
Just ask. Yeah. If, again, I, available to you for wherever you want me, whenever you want me, and if there's a conflict, because, I don't know, my wife, I will, for disclosure, is a divorce attorney, so when we're on vacation, she doesn't allow me to not go, so I would have someone back me up in that instance. But if I'm available, I will always be there when you need me.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I just have a, a comment on it. This is a very important vote. Undoubtedly, the Town Attorney is one of the most important positions in local government, and the office impacts every town department, and is involved in all legal actions by or against the town, and provides or procures counsel for many different departments. The legal department budget for the current year is just under $3 million, which includes an allocation to retain outside counsel at $1 million. So I want to be clear that my comments, this is, you know, both to Ken and to Vin, who also knows this, my comments in my vote today are no reflection on either Mr. Marino or the capability of the lawyers in this firm, and I truly hope that this will be a successful relationship, and I stand ready to provide whatever assistance to you and to the law firm that I can offer. However, I was not involved in the selection of Cohen &amp; Wolf, or the identification of Mr. Marino. I was not asked to interview him or other members of his firm prior to his selection, though I was given the opportunity to meet with him after the decision to hire him was made public. I was not provided sufficient information about the First Selectmen's process for selecting this particular law firm over others in order to make an informed decision on this resolution. My primary concerns with this item relate to the process for selection, the vague terms of the retainer agreement, and the potential for significant self-referral, and the cost risk for the town. There's also a lack of clarity about how this outsourcing and transition will work, although I do appreciate your words here today, and I also recognize that transitions are in and of themselves challenging, and I've relayed all of these concerns directly to the First Selectman and to Selectwoman Raven. But given the importance of this position, the magnitude of the public dollars at stake, I would have hoped that the selecting of this law firm would have been, the process for selecting this law firm would have been defined more clearly, and if this vote goes forward now as our Town Attorney, I would hope that you would counsel in that regard as well, and that you're a municipal lawyer. And for those reasons, I'll be voting against the appointment.
Thank you.
No questions? I, I was able to meet, as Jill was able to meet with you, I met with you as well, and thank you for accommodating my schedule.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you. I have no further questions, so is there a motion to approve the nomination of, selection of Vincent Marino as our Town?
Didn't make a motion, excuse me, you didn't make a motion, you just need the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's been a while. Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, two to one vote. Congratulations, and I look forward to working with you.
I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, in the new business, from items D, 3G are going to be an executive session, but before we do that, we have two appointments and nominations. First, the appointment of, nomination of Howard Richmond to fill a vacancy in the Board of Assessment Appeals. Is there a motion to? A motion to?
I, motion to approve the appointment of Howard.
I motion to approve the appointment of Howard Richmond to fill the vacancy on the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Which, the term ends on 12/31/21. Is there a second?
I second.
I second the nomination.
All those in favor?
Just as a matter, again, of process, before we take the vote, just want to comment that Howard Richmond, who is the former tax collector for the town, has, you know, is a known commodity here in Town Hall and we thank him for his continued interest in serving and for his qualification. I'm sure he'll bring the discipline that he brought to the Tax Collector's Office to the Board of Assessment Appeals as well, so.
Thank you and well said and certainly one of the great public servants in the Town of Greenwich. Very well thought of, somebody I've known for about 25 years, maybe more now. But you do a terrific job wherever you go and we're just thrilled that you're stepping up to the Board of Assessment Appeals and happy to see you around more with your buddy over there, Joe. So thank you, Howard, for, again, for stepping up again for the town as always. Okay. So now, so all those in favor of Howard Richmond filling the vacancy of a term to end on 12/31/21, in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Congratulations, Howard. Would you like to say a few words?
Just wanted to come up and thank everybody for that and for your, I'm honored to be there. I think one of the things Fred knows is that by not being tax collector now, I wasn't in public service and one of the things I learned about being tax collector is I love public service. It's a tremendous thing. So this gives me an opportunity to get back in as tax collector and working with assessors. I've learned a lot in two years, so that will also help out. My colleague Joe Healy and I are actually going to a Board of Assessment Appeals workshop tonight in Colchester so that we're up to speed, so we're gonna, we're gonna miss your presentation, Fred, so we wish you luck on that, but again, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Howard, appreciate it. Safe travels tonight. See you, Joe. Okay. Now we go, we will discuss the last item before we go to executive session and she's been waiting patiently there. Patiently there. The appointment of Renata Machowski of, as Director of Purchasing and Administrative Services. Renata has been working for the town since age 14. It's amazing and had been with this, with purchasing since 2001 and stepped in at a very difficult time last, last year and has just a sterling reputation in this building and throughout town. And we're thrilled, thrilled to have you here before us today to vote on your appointment as the Director of the Department. And there were some really good applicants for this position, but we felt that you were the best fit and certainly know the building, know the town well and we know you're gonna do some really good things there for us, so thank you for stepping up and availing yourselves to us. Any other?
No comments, but thank you, Renata. I echo everything that Mr. Camillo just said. Having had the opportunity to work with you before, I know the expertise that you bring to your job, the protection that you put in the town processes for the benefit of the taxpayers and really appreciate all of your dedication.
Thank you. Okay. So all those in favor?
Do we have to read it or?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, where is, I got it, I'm sorry. Okay. Resolution appointing Renata Machowski as Director of Purchasing and Administrative Services of the Town of Greenwich, Connecticut. Whereas, it is a recommendation of the First Selectman that Renata Machowski serve as Director of Purchasing and Administrative Services for the Town of Greenwich. Whereas, in accordance with Section 218 of the Charter for the Town of Greenwich, the Board of Selectmen may, subject to provisions of Article 15 of said Town Charter, appoint all heads of departments which are under the supervision and control of the First Selectman. Whereas pursuant to Section 226 of the Charter of the Town of Greenwich, the head of the Office of Purchasing shall be the purchasing agent who shall be appointed by the Selectman. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Greenwich that Renata Machowski is hereby appointed as Director of Purchasing and Administrative Services for the Town of Greenwich, commencing upon adoption of this resolution, adopted at a duly noticed meeting of the Board of Selectmen on this 23rd day of January 2020.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposition. Congratulations. Well deserved. We're thrilled to have you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Renata.
Thank you, Renata. Take care. Okay, is there a motion to go into?
Can we take a five-minute break before we go into executive session or a three-minute break?
Yeah.
Yes, we could.
Buy a break.
All right, this is the settlement of Green Meadows LLC versus the Town of Greenwich. This will be a tax credit of approximately $15,532 against future tax payments. So you need a motion?
I move that we accept Council's recommendation.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is RFK Greenwich Enterprises, Inc. versus the Town of Greenwich. And this is for parcels at 35 River Road and there will be a tax credit of approximately $8,728 against future tax payments. If the plaintiff were to have prevailed the trial, they would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately $29,093 plus interest and costs.
I move to rec, to accept the Council's recommended settlement.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is RFK Greenwich Enterprises, Inc. versus the Town of Greenwich for property at 49 River Road and this is for a settlement with a tax credit of approximately $179,327 against future tax payments. If the plaintiff were to have prevailed the trial, they would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately $543,527 plus interest and costs.
I move that we accept Council's recommended settlement.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
The last one is Ilmen Dorlo LLC versus the Town of Greenwich for a proposed tax settlement or tax credit of approximately $53,007 against future tax payments. If the plaintiff were to have prevailed the trial, they would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately $181,284 plus interest and costs.
I move that we accept Council's recommended settlement.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Okay.
Second?
See you in two weeks.